And here with the nice lady.
I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts. Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow. And Councillor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
And I will note councillor Pitts is excused for the evening. They have still U of O commencement going on and we are working on councillor Woodrow right now. She should be joining us shortly. All right. We have two items tonight. The first one is the city of Springfield standard construction specifications with Jeff Pascal, and I think he brought all fourteen hundred pages with him.
It did. Good evening, Mayor, councillors. Sorry about that. Yeah, that's a lot. I I hope you didn't feel like you needed to read all these pages. Yeah, I'm here. I have the pleasure bringing this construction specifications. This was the version I was given when I first got hired at the city of Springfield. So this is like the with the two thousand and six updates. What I tried to do in the material, I as brief as possible kind of outlay a little bit of a historical context for you about where we're at, how we're using the construction and specific construction specifications. For council, this is kind of a housekeeping item to review, update. It's based on the what's required in the municipal code. But that kind of discredits a lot of background that went into this with staff of reviewing and getting us here with the help of our procurement staff on the part one hundred, which is the solicitation part, which is a separate addenda because we've gone and put some set special Springfield things in there, redacted some things. And really what we used was a model that Eugene had already gone and edited because one of the things that we need to do is get we're working, as you've heard many times, to get federally certified to deliver transportation projects. And one of the things is ODOT is going to require us to be using this book anyway, as well as the solicitation part. And so but we just didn't want to adopt their what was in here. And so since Eugene has already been approved with it, we just thought, why reinvent the wheel? We're just going to copy and replace Eugene with Springfield. So that's where we're at. I know we have a short time, so I just wanted to leave it. If anybody did have questions or anything like that, a staff recommendation is where we've been using this for our capital projects as far as the technical specs because ours are out of date. We haven't transitioned all of the private improvement projects to this yet, and it will be a process. So anything that's currently under a permit will be the way it's been. And as new permits come in, we'll require them to start using this book for their construction and design.
Leonard.
I really just wanted to ask if there was going to be any kind of need or effort to streamline the statewide construction specifications and the Eugene's construction specifications to to our code or our zoning. I mean, like, for instance, the height of buildings or something like that.
No, that that's not in here.
It's not covered.
Really for construction in the right of way, anything that's publicly owned infrastructure, there are times we use some of these on the private, but it's like, okay, if you're designing a swale or you're designing, you know, an alley or something that might be public, private streets, even though we have some lesser standards for that. But as far as buildings and things like that, that's not covered in here.
Got it. Thank you.
And if if you see the way it's referenced is the code just references our construction specifications, the construction specifications are a separate document from the development code.
Councillor Pictionary.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm with you that it's specifically construction. And I in going through this, I'm not seeing a lot of reference. Actually, I'm not seeing much reference at all of to the striping of those constructed projects and traffic control on top of the surfaces. This is just specifically how the surfaces are constructed. And am I correct?
Yes, but there is traffic stuff in here. So in the back pages, there is striping. It's usually at the back. And I believe part nine hundred gets into that's electrical system. So that gets into like the RFBEs, things like that signage. I I will tell you, you see how thick it is. I don't have every part memorized. I will tell you that that's that's one reason I do love this book is because if if somebody asks me a question, I can go to the index and look it up. So I can go look up striping right now and find out what part it is. But that is covered in here.
So when you say, when you say that it is, you grabbed Eugene's as a cookie cutter, which is fine. I don't have a problem with saving time and energy. But when it comes to striping, does it include the the type of stripe, stripe, striping that controls bicycles?
So it covers everything. That's the one thing about this book. It's comprehensive. And so when we do our designs, we pick what what specification for our projects we want to use out of this book. So there's a lot of different ways of doing it. This kind of comprehensively covers that. Now, I should go back. What we copied from Eugene was part one hundred, which just covers how the contract is executed. So solicitation, how disputes are resolved, that sort of thing, payment dates, times, things like that, not the technical specifications. We participate on committees. So back in two thousand and eight, we participate because this book didn't comprehensively cover drainage and sanitary. That's one reason why a lot of municipalities didn't use this. But there are a lot of municipalities across the state that now use this because those things have been updated. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, sort of. I'm just trying to. When you it causes pause for me when you say that we're taken from another entity and going to go ahead and use it as ours. When there are some things with other entities that I strongly disagree with in regards to, for example, committing entire lanes for bicycle travel around like the university and painting them green or blue or whatnot, when I disagree with that type of usage for streets. So is this in any way locking us into anything that the city of Eugene is doing? And now Springfield has to do it.
So I think where you're getting into a scope. So if we decided to do that, then this book would tell us how to build that. But then we would have to go and scope the project for that. If we just scope the project with our traditional bike lanes, it tells us this book governs how we construct and strike those. So that's part of the decision process on policy on how do we how do we treat bicycle facilities, bike ped facilities? What is Springfield's policy around what we want those facilities to look like? This book then just tells us what materials we're going to put down, how we build it, how we measure it, how we pay for it, not necessarily how we design it.
Okay, so I mean, I guess what I'm I'm trying to get specific and I'm having a hard time here. So will this book be used by staff to say, okay, hey, look, we have this standard. So now we're going to implement it here in Springfield. And in this book, we have the standards. So now we we intend to go that direction. Is it is going to be looked at as something we're mandated for? Or is it just something that as you're inferring, going to be like a guideline for us? And not boxes into the corner of saying, okay, this is how we are compelled to do it.
Okay, so what we're so no.
In design.
In design, no. We're talking now you're talking to policy. So our development code in the engineering design manual, which the council sees and approves, that's where we set our policies for how we want to see things constructed. I'm going to use an example that's not transportation because I'm not the traffic engineer. So this is more my field of expertise.
I see Brian behind you smiling.
Because he's probably sitting there waiting to poke me if I say something contrary. So that's why we use the example.
I think he has a slingshot.
Yeah. So let's take storm drainage facilities.
Okay.
He in our engineering design manual do not allow corrugated metal pipe because our soils that we have eat metal pipe. They say, oh, it's a thirty five year project or product, our soils will eat it in ten years and destroy it. I mean, thus the over under channel and having to replace that because it was failing. So this book still has corrugated metal pipe in it has standards for what the material looks like and everything else, because in eastern Oregon, they can use corrugated metal pipe with no problems and it lasts. And so this book kind of covers the whole state. But what we've done in our engineering design manual is we've said in the city of Springfield, we don't allow the use of corrugated metal pipe. So that kind of takes that out of here. So that's where the council's opportunity is, is when we bring those updates, which we've already done, because we've tried to pull out and align what was in the development code as that was redeveloped, redone with our engineering design manual. So what you're asking is, no, this will not be suddenly staff going and saying, well, this book says we have to design it this way. No, those are different decisions. This is once we have a concept or a scope, this book then, and we have that designed on, this is what they use in the field to go, okay, okay, we're constructing a street. What kind of rock do we need to put down? How's that rock compacted? What's the test for that compaction?
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we weren't locked into something that we didn't have a full explanation of. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councillor Rodley.
Yeah, I just wanted to take them up because I was the one who was picking on you for being so many pages. But I do just want to call out that I appreciate how much work goes into this. And I always appreciate when we're like getting ahead of things and doing things properly so that we are ahead of the game. So I just appreciate all the work and I appreciate y'all paying attention to this. So thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
It's a document I'm familiar with, and I did scan the whole thing. By the way, it's certainly different than what it used to be. It covers everything, Joe, believe me.
It's very comprehensive. So this was just the review will be next week. We'll have the I'll just have it on consent calendar.
All right, perfect. We appreciate it. And before we go to the next item, I want to note the councillor Woodrow has joined us. And then our next item is the main street safety. And I think it's Tom that's presenting it.
Yeah, apologies for the miscue. What was in your packet was where we were about a week and a half ago. And what we've handed out is what we wanted to place in your packet and didn't quite get it there. So what I'd really like to do tonight is not really take a step back, but but take a step to the side. And as we've been talking about this and thinking about it, talking with the city manager's office and with council leadership and thinking about it as a project team. Given that there's just not a lot of time between now and recess. And as we move forward, we want to make the best use of council's time. We'd like to adapt this work session and use our time here and follow on work sessions if needed to explore, you know, what is really going to be useful for the council in the fall and winter when you consider this draft plan? And you look at potential plan modifications or different alternatives of of how the plans presented. And that's really the bulk of what I do want to talk about. But before I get there, I'd like to just cover a couple of things. The first is that, you know, we're all still hoping that the council will have the time to take a look at the plan and potentially the technical memorandum, which are all available at the project website over the summer. But towards that end, if it's at all helpful for us to put the draft plan and the technical memorandum in three ring binders and get those to you. I'm still a paper guy, so I have that value. And and you can think about it and merit looks like.
Oh, I'm seeing some head nods. So I think councillor Pictionary is a yes. I see councillor Woodrow has been a yes. Anybody else ready to? Yeah, so that sounds like it is a good idea.
Okay. It's it's old school, but if the homework's sitting on the dining room table, you know, maybe I'm more apt to do it. And that way you can kind of flip back and forth and and, you know, put your page markers in and whatever else. So that's great. We'll do that. I also wanted to just talk briefly about what the role of a plan is. That came up at the last work session, and I'd like to kind of put the plan and planning kind of in context of a multi-step process, which could start with visioning. In this case, it's it's planning and it's in a plan. A project has to be in. So so this type of facility plan would be a refinement to our transportation system plan, which is an element of our state mandated comprehensive plan. And basically, in order to build a project, to fund and build a project, it's got to be in your comp plan, which this facility plan sort of roll would roll up into or any facility plan. But the plan is really just the plan. And I know, you know, Winston Churchill and Dwight Eisenhower had different things to say around plans, which was, you know, plans are always going to change, but planning is essential. And that's kind of how I look at this. We put things into or you adopt things into a plan. And let's say there's a project in there and it gets legs. Well, that's got to go through project development, which is a design phase. And then that design always comes back to council for another look. And you've provided us guidance on multiple designs. Some of those interesting meetings were the Hayden Harlow roundabout and and a little bit in the Franklin area. But so that's planning leads to project development. And then project delivery is really when the council has signed off on what to build and the funds are there. And then our engineering group using that giant book in part goes out and bids a project and constructs and 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 the private side typically will construct it. Then the then engineering inspectors will inspect it and it'll be deemed appropriate and taken into the city's inventory. So I just wanted to kind of stretch that out a little bit, that the plan is just the beginning. It's not the ending. It's required, but there are multiple gates along the way for the city council to look at what you would like to see built in Springfield. So planning, engineering, construction. So here we are in the planning phase. And to get back to that, you know, what would really be helpful for for all of you, you know, fast forward to you've looked at the draft and you're thinking about alternatives? What's going to help you move your conversations and your deliberations along? And I have multiple just ideas and concepts here to kick around to help with the thinking of this. And I'm
All right, hang on, Tom. Why don't you have a take a question? He's got some.
Will, are you? I mean, was was that more or less what you had as preface to this? Or were you going to go through the thing one one aspect at a time?
I'm going to list some ideas that we've had that might be helpful, which the council can respond to or or provide your own.
Yeah, so they pre-populated a list based on what we hear in our our conversations the the last couple of weeks to kind of get us started. Right, back to you, Tom.
All right. So, you know, one thing that might be helpful is specific information on where what we call countermeasures, and these are the tools in the toolbox in the draft plan. Specific information on where countermeasures or changes in the quarter would be most effective. So where is the highest need and what would it where would a change bring the highest impact? And that's a focused look. You know, if any of the councillors wanted to sit down with staff and say, what does this tech memo really mean? That's something that that our traffic engineer, you know, could could easily do. I read those sometimes and I call Brian and say, what does this really say? So potentially information about why roundabouts in the quarter, that might be useful. Or, you know, why medians are being shown as as one of the most effective count, you know, countermeasures in that court. Why is that, you know? And maybe even diagrammatically, so we can look at a picture. Why does it help? And why does it help here? You know, we we thought a lot about and and Brian used to do this in the past. Kind of a setup of set up the cones, you know, call call Roseburg and see if they've got a big enough gravel field and would set up the cones and run some trucks through them and find out what the issues are from that perspective. Again, just just ideas. Kind of a field tenant.
Leonard.
Okay, now now I do have a question. So on on the countermeasures, I'm thinking specifically in terms of the roundabouts and the medians. I there were I I think there were some erroneous pictures that we were sort of painting in our own heads of this project. I mean, for instance, the fact that there was going to be breaks in the median every block instead of every ten blocks or so. And, you know, in a lot of cases, a picture is worth a thousand words. And I think as many diagrams and as many visual representations as we can get in this loose leaf binder, I think would be helpful to just about everybody, especially the more visually oriented of us.
Thank you for that. And I do, you know, at the end of this presentation, we're going to revisit that that the street opening comment that was made last last week.
Merrily.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So far, I'm following you really well. Couple of questions. In previous in previous information has been provided. There are times even in even in what you ended up not using tonight. There was information that said that a certain number of accidents had occurred and in because of that specific references, there were certain number of accidents that occurred in twenty twenty that indicated that the trend was still continuing. But there was no references to what that data was related to. But then it moved on, then it moved on to talk about Main Street and why Main Street needed certain safety measures. But in looking at the two things, they didn't, they didn't connect. Because we haven't had three hundred and eighty six accidents on Main Street, or however many that that number was. So I the reason I'm citing that is not necessarily to get into conversation about that. But part of what I'm getting from the community is the disconnect. Trying to make it relevant to Main Street. I mean, that's that's where people are coming from. If 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 where I live or if my business or how I travel back and forth to work is is relevant, then I want to know the relevant data to what's what is being planned or what's being being put in the toolbox. And as much as other information might be available, they're looking for relevance to Main Street and relevance to how how it's going to affect where where they're at. And to me, that's really important. If we're talking about setting up different safety measures or different options of safety measures in the toolbox and picking and choosing or picking and choosing all or nothing or anywhere in between. I think it needs to be in a in a status of relevancy to Main Street and me and the use of our Main Street. As opposed to pulling out all kinds of, you know, roundabouts may work really well in Arizona, or they may really work well somewhere else. But how are they? Are they relevant to working well here? I don't know the answer to that. But I think the community that that I've been listening to or been hearing from wants wants the relevance.
Great. I I kind of I have that in two places in in my mind. One is how the data is displayed. So, you know, sometimes displaying the data geographically or in other ways can maybe give you more of that picture that is on the ground specific. But also you know, a couple of examples on how the countermeasures could be applied, I think, is going to create a graphic where, you know, Brian can come up here and talk about in this block, this pretend project block, you know, these were the crashes and these were the issues. And out of the toolbox, you know, we took these things and we put them in here for the reason of addressing these crashes right here in this block. And this is what it could look like. So that that gets it pretty grounded. I think. Is that along the lines of what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think I go back to when we put the pedestrian crossings in. And the first meetings we had at each site, we talked to the immediate businesses and the immediate immediate entities that were involved in that particular site. And there were times when we changed it where it was going to be, where we moved it forward, moved it back. We changed the maybe we changed the fence on somebody's property. I mean, there were different things that were part of the conversation in order in order to accommodate the safety measure as well as the immediate surrounding to be the least impactful to the businesses and the entities around it. I think what has been missing so far in this presentation is that kind of relevance.
Yes.
The businesses don't have that sense of trust that that's going to happen with this plan or what with what's in the toolbox.
So I think that's exactly why I brought up that distinction between planning and and project development and delivery because we're not at the project level yet. And so it's very difficult, you know, unless you guys want to sign off on project in the future, which I'm not suggesting that either. But it but it is you know, the plan guides the project. The design of the project comes back to council. Council thumbs up or thumbs down or or says fix that or get back on site and work with them. They have an issue or whatever direction you provide. That's how we're going to build design for an actual project. But the plan isn't design level, so it doesn't have that in it. And that, I think, is is a significant point of confusion. The flip side is if you adopt a plan, then it is the guiding document. And that may be a cause for concern as well.
Right. Um, I think you've got a pull on that for like, there's a lot in that sentence that you just said, right? So you know, explicitly, I would be interested in, you know, what can we put in the plan that sort of makes it into an artifact that the council gets a vote on a design before anything gets built, as well as if we want out of this thing, right? What is it? What does that potentially look like? Because I think some of this is driven by sort of process, right? But the only document that people have to go on is the eighteen hundred pages. And if it's not specifically spelled out, it will, we won't get the clarity that we're looking for.
So thank you for reading my notes on part three.
I must jump ahead then.
Well, a couple of things that we are planning on is revising the plan to be a lot more clear about what a plan is and what project development is and where those dividing lines are. So that's in the works, you know, the plan's role, what decisions, the design decisions, the council will hold and when and getting that written down in the plan, I think, is a really good idea.
Yeah. And one thing I would like to see more information on is I know that you have the well, what how do we end up with roundabouts, right? And I would love to see more information about that question as well as what's an alternative choice that we can make to roundabouts? And then, right, we we talk about flexibility being in the plan. But it's not clear to me if we walk through this through design, at what point do we drop out of the roundabouts into maybe an alternative path? Is this written today? Right? So like, that's one of the I think the one of the big choices the council is going to face is this question about, well, is it zero roundabouts? Is it nine roundabouts? Right? And then how do we make like, how is that decision actually made?
Yeah. What what are the the choices and the trade offs?
Yeah, because that that's going to be key for to get to an alternative that's going to be workable. Councillor Rodley.
Yeah, I appreciate that because I think that sort of moves into what I've been thinking about since last week, which is I think part of the either the confusion or the the panic around it is that when you look at the plan, it feels like everything's going to happen at once. So some deeper understanding of potential phasing of this project. Because I mean, I think like the mayor says, it's possible that we have a couple of roundabouts and this or that. I mean, that there's ways for us to put this together. And so to think about the phasing of it is one of the things that I'm like, I think if we if we have a better understanding of that, and that feeds into like, what are the touch points where we get to regroup and make decisions? And that is really helpful. The other thing that I other than I'm like, thinking of some of the drawings, I would like to just have a better understanding of how different use will experience the plan. Because we have people talking about, you know, how trucks are going to experience this and how, you know, bicycles are going to. So I just need a better understanding of that. And I think we could probably get that from some of, you know, how people are experiencing Glenwood, you know, how they're experiencing that and how different places are using it. Just a better understanding of that, because I think it's gonna and what the the traffic looks like, which is asking a lot, but it's just like, what does that look like? And how is it being experienced? So we're not elevating voices that are using it less than others, if that makes sense.
It does. I yeah, the the how how will the different modes of travel experience it and why? Is is pretty important. Is, is pretty important. So yes. The, you know, the, I just have to comment, the. The plan typically in Oregon's mandated planning system, we have to plan for twenty years out. If you crack the cover of this draft, that's more than twenty years of work in that plan. So it kind of, it's, it's, uh, it's more like a vision slash a plan. And probably one of the alternatives that we will bring back for council consideration. Is, you know, is, is this universe of Main Street just way too big for a twenty year look? And is there something more refined or, or shorter or in a different place that makes sense? Because it's, it is, you know. I've worked pretty hard over the last fifteen years to bring money to Springfield. And there's no way we could build nine roundabouts in twenty years. I just can't see it. So you know, how do we right size our planning effort for the time scale that we're dealing with? And then talk about what could come next, you know, in the plan. I think all of that merits a lot of exploration.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. So I, I understand what you're saying. But my concern. Of, of several concerns, but one concern I, I have the way it's written. And I think actually Merrily hit on it just a little bit last time too, is that. This plan. Has, it infers that it's got flexibility. But when I read it, it doesn't have a, a wisp of that in my mind. At least a strong enough wisp to make me feel comfortable that there's flexibility. When we're using finite terms such as even the meridians, the description of the meridian, the, the median, I'm sorry, meridian. The medians down Main Street. I keep going back and forth trying to say, okay, I'm trying to see the flexibility and I saw, and I listened, asking several questions with Brian and. Molly, this in the past meetings, that now the, the median is broken at every, every street. I look at the plan, it shows intermittent and it says intermittent. So I'm trying to get my arms around what really is there. And what has changed since we originally heard it? And then I, I, I look at it even further and it looks like at the moment we say yes to this plan. We're locked is, it is, it is set in stone. And therefore it's going to, we are going to, as a city, going to be required to follow through with it as written. And I just, I, I'm lacking confidence as to the identification of where our off ramps are. When, you know, at what point do we say, okay, this, this isn't going so well. We need to bail on this, that, or the other thing, a part of the plan, learning as we go. Because I can tell you that I may go out fishing one day, but next week I'm going to fish in a whole different way. And, and this is, this is a very flexible, valuable thing. And it's being treated as if we're chiseling it out of marble. And I'm, I'm very skeptical as to whether or not it's any kind of project like that can be successful. Especially getting us boxed into mandating our own selves, making some legal agreement with these different agencies saying, hey. This is how we're going to do it. I mean, I'm looking at some of these cross, cross sections. That imply that the select elements for toolbox, for example. And we're talking about some, some, you know, intersection control, raised median framework and street cross sections. And even in the street cross sections is talking about constrained width, balanced street width and active transportation enhanced cross sections, et cetera. Those, those are all, they all sound great, but I haven't, it's like Leonard was. Counselor Stair was talking about, you know, diagrams, I want to see what. What is there, what is proposed? And, and going from there, because I look at, I look at these and they're, they're going. I got diagrams and everything from ninety-six feet across to where our present is at eighty. And so there are sixteen feet that we're talking about that literally is about a lane and a half worth of space. That is being proposed, well, that space comes from somewhere. And we don't own that much property along Main Street as far as right away, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm not correct, is that correct? We don't own that much street.
Well, it's, it, it varies. Out on the east, it's as much as a hundred feet, the closer you get to Bob Straub.
Right.
But, and then there, there's some accordions and there's some places where it's wider and, and less wide, but I totally hear you. You know, what, what can you read in the plan which convinces you, I guess, that it's not set in stone? That it can be amended, that there's a follow-on project delivery gate, you know, at council and those kinds of things. Another suggestion on here was, you know, refreshing the data, coming up with some either policy or some language in there that says. If this amount of time has gone by before the next project development effort, and that's its own whole project. Then, you know, the data must be refreshed and updated so that like you said, know which hole we're going fishing. So that, you know, we have a good day.
And well, we got to be able to switch up immediately and not, not ten years. And, and again, you know, one of my biggest concerns is that median going down the road and. Eliminating the possibility of turning left onto Main Street coming out. And if there's going to be a break at every street, which already there's a median that violates that standard already on Main Street. It, it'll, it requires a person to come out and turn left. And or if they're uncomfortable doing that, then they have to turn right and find it, find some roundabout which. You and I both know that it's not going to happen for a while. So what's going to be, what's going to be constructed first, the medians? Or the roundabouts and both of them come with some, some very dangerous consequences in my mind. And, and this is supposed to be a safety project, but I can tell you, coming out onto Main Street, past a median and turning left. You're going to be, you're probably going to have some higher frequency of accidents of greater, of greater damage because of that T-bone effect. You know, some are coming out has got a greater, greater chance of being T-boned by, by traffic coming towards them. And, and I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just having to convince this is safe.
Well, we'll, we'll see what we can do, you know, order of construction is important, obviously. Not all going to get built at once. I, you know, you asked about Papa's Pizza. I'll just come clean. I go there for lunch sometimes when I get the buffet text. And, and when Emma and I were out walking the corridor about seven years ago. Somebody pulled out of the restaurant that's across the side street from Papa's and. Their truck was big enough, they didn't bother going around that median and went right over it.
Yeah.
So.
But mom and, mom and pop aren't going to do that and, and.
Well, we don't really want anyone. But yeah, this whole, you know. The how, why and where and being accurate, and we are going to circle back on those median openings. Brian's got some more to talk about there and the order of construction. You know, those are all things that, that we think about and we talk about. You can't just build something that, that dangles there, you know, in space and then doesn't have the, has the wrong effect, in fact.
Right.
You know, that's all, a little bit, the idea of the pilot concept is, you know. What, what, what would a package look like that was reasonable? And, and to bring that back and show you.
Yeah. And, and I would like, I would like to definitely very bold and italicize and underline where, where the possible off ramps are. Where, you know, are you going to have, you know, create packages as to phase? So people know in their head that including council know in our heads that. This one part is what we're looking at. And yes, it's a twenty-year plan, twenty-year safety plan, but, but when are these? What part, you know, between thirty-first and fortieth, when is that going to happen or when is that? You know, what part is going to be the experimental part? What part are we going to see whether it's a failure? And not get so deep into it that we can't recover.
Right. Those are all exactly the, the kinds of conversations that. We're hearing that council would like to have in the fall. And so getting this input ahead of time will allow us to prepare for that.
Appreciate it. And it's not just safety in my mind too. I'm thinking twos is at what point, you know. I'm not interested in negatively affecting businesses because businesses, it's hard enough for them to survive. And I don't know what's going to happen to our, to our society in the next six years. I mean, business wise, there, there's so many different challenges and I don't want to be part of throwing up some challenges with businesses that will. That will cost them their business. I just can't be part of that.
So before we call on Counselor Woodrow, I think this, I think there's a, a good, sort of a good point that is made around economic development, right? Just getting clear in the purpose statement, you know, it's a safety and economic development plan. And getting clearer about, well, we're like, what are we doing that is going to drive economic benefit across, you know, across the corridor? And I think there's a, there, there's another piece that is really interesting because you talked about how long the corridor is, right? Like to me, it would make more sense, you know, how, how granular can we sort of slice it up into sort of districts? That sort of makes some sort of sense along the corridor and identify them in a way that makes some sort of sense to the, uh, to the public, right? Because we think about them as a community, you know, about, you know, where the shopping centers are and, you know, when, when you get out, out to Thurston. And really the plan's kind of divided up into three big chunks. And the question I have is, can we, can we get a little bit more granular and deal with it sort of in sections?
Yeah.
Counselor Woodrow.
Well, that kind of segues right into what my question was. That if, if we do have it in chunks like that, I think what would be helpful. To get to the point of where council puts their approval on whatever it turns out to be, would be to actually have. Alternative op, alternative ideas. I mean, we kind of got this handed to us with nine roundabouts. Being the, being the option. And there really wasn't a whole lot of in-between. You know, uh, well, if we have one big roundabout here and maybe one over here and we do something in between, maybe that would work. But I, I think that, I think it would help to have some of those options or alternatives as part of the toolbox. To be able to go, okay, that option number one, here's option number two, not, not with the idea that those are the only options. But I think part of the reaction to what was in front of us now is that this is the plan, nine roundabouts. As opposed to this is an option. What other options are there that could conceivably offer safety enhancements that we're looking for? Especially since if you're, if you're looking at. What, what's the word I want? If you're looking at taking, taking away the, the twenty-year concept. And coming back down, coming back to a more realistic conceivable approach. I think having options that would fit into those elements as well as the segments that the mayor mentioned. I think the combination of those would make it a lot easier to, to look at and to, to understand from that, uh, from that standpoint.
Okay, got it. Want me to read off a few more and see if that sparks anything or you think we got the flavor here?
Well, you, you could read off a few more, but I'm going to add one more to your list. Can we get some sort of issue log about stuff we've heard from the community, right? Is it still open or do we think we've addressed it? And if we think we've addressed it, like, how do we know that, you know, it's been addressed? Cause I know there's a lot of public feedback coming out and there's a lot of good stuff. There's people that's saying, hey, we need a pedestrian crosswalk all the way through. You know, hey, people say we need more lights, but you know, we've got to get our arm around the breadth of public input that we've got.
Great. Yeah, we, you know, we may have to sort of catalog that a little bit and group up similar things and, you know. But, but bring it straight.
Yep.
You bet.
Right. I know you've got more if you want to keep firing them at us because I think it's sparking the conversation that we need.
So let's see. This was responses to public comments, so that was there. Talked a little bit about really just sitting down, you know, outside of the plan with select businesses and, and. Hearing their concerns, you know, going out to the curb and looking at it and kind of capturing that, documenting that. You know, not judging it really, but, but hearing it and, and documenting it and then. Looking for a way to. Roll that in most likely at the, at the project design level, but capturing that direction in the plan. That kind of thing.
Uh, hang on a second, Merrily, did you leave your hand up or do you have another? Okay, go ahead.
One more that hasn't, it's kind of been glossed over the last couple of weeks, but it's like, I think it's a critical part. And that is how the first responders get involved and, and included in all this. It was on one of the pages from the PowerPoint last week, but it wasn't really mentioned. But I think it's really important because if you start putting roundabouts in, if they need to change the lights, they can't change the lights anymore. So, so they're an important element to this.
Great. Got it. Yeah. So let's see, sit downs, site-specific concerns, you know, that's, you know, is it freight? Is it a destination business? Is it a pass-by business? What's the economic hook for that business? And how would the project? Impact that. You know, this came up actually in a conversation with the mayor. How are we going to know that we've been successful, right? So if, if something gets green lighted and then there's money and then it gets designed and it gets through all those gates and it's built. How can we measure the success? And so that's something that we're thinking about. You know, the whole whack-a-mole, I think it was Counselor Woodrow who talked about whack-a-mole. And it's an interesting, it's an interesting concept. I think over time, we want to whack as many moles as we can without doing harm to the community. Yeah, you know, just what different needs are at different locations on the business side of the line.
Leonard.
Is, is success in this context kind of a moving target? I mean, it seems like the conditions in and around Main Street are going to be changing along with the city. And so the best that we can really do is take one phase at a time. I, you know, and I, I think what Counselor Pishner was suggesting is just taking this in bites is probably the best idea. I mean, just finding the, finding the right sort of, uh, experiment to, to run on certain things. And then just see if it works there at that time. And it's not going to be a perfect process, right?
But well, it's, it's, uh, you know, for better or for worse, it's really not like fluid mechanics. Or, you know, tensile sheer strength of steel, you got a little human head behind that wheel.
Right.
And what we're trying to do is, is. And you're never going to, people are just going to drive the way they want to or need to or have to or just do drive. You know, something bad is going to happen to somebody else. So it's traffic engineering and, and design is a particularly difficult challenge because of that human element. So. You know, the state of the practice does the best it can. It's constantly reviewing data, doing case studies, trying to, to, to keep up. But certainly if. You know, if we had to undo something for a very good reason, I would expect that we would do that. Or at least what we've done with our roundabouts over time is we keep refining the next application. So you put one in and you learn and they're, okay, that corner that needs more space or a mountable curb or whatever. And we, we keep improving. So bytes is really. Something we're thinking a lot about. Yeah. So that's, that's just my, you know, this idea of, of what would be helpful. And if there's anything else that, that you all can think of, you know, and I mean. Uh, maybe just send it to the mayor after the meeting or whatever, and he can conduit to us, if that's.
Tom, I think other, other treatments would be, would be good, right? Because the, the, uh, are other options, right? Because the plan itself says essentially roundabouts and medians, right? But when you hear us talk as, as a community, people are saying lights, they're saying, some people are saying slow down the speed limit again. Some people are saying, you know. um, you know, like at some point we talked about sort of bus turnouts, right? Like more pedestrian crossings. I'm sure there's other things that we also could do, right? So I don't know that we necessarily want to limit ourselves to these two specific things in all cases. Merrily.
And I think at some point or somewhere along the line, it's important to recognize that there are times when infrastructure is not the issue. It's not the cause. It's not, it's not going to, it's not going to be the golden, the golden arm that, that, that it takes everything away. It takes every bad thing away. And I think there are times when it's, when it's important to recognize that, um, that it's not necessarily a change in infrastructure that it's going to make anything any different in, in, you know, in certain elements. There are, and I think it's important just along the way as, as this gets progressed. Um, it's just important that every once in a while, when we see something go, well, you know what? That's just the way people drive in that particular area. And I don't know, there's much that, I mean, you drive one twenty-six nowadays and you've got people flying by you at eighty miles an hour and it's not one twenty-six's fault. You know, if there's an accident three blocks ahead or three exits ahead of you, it's not the infrastructure that's causing the issue. And what I'm saying is I think there are points on Main Street where that can, can be, uh, uh, a part of the concept. This is, okay, you know, this, this is not infrastructure. This is, this, this is just what's going to happen or this is, some can be a situation where it's going to happen no matter what we do. And I think those, I think just being realistic, I think recognizing that that can be a part of it is also important.
Nancy.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the challenges of this particular project is just the enormity of the project for one, right? And so when, uh, staff come before you and before the community and discuss the project, naturally there are a lot of questions that come back and it requires a high degree of analysis and response and reporting back to the public. That's, that's appropriate. That's what we would expect from a project of this nature. Where it gets tricky is the timing of getting materials out to the public in order to be ready for, um, another session the very following week. So when we decided to pull back a little bit and just do a check in with you and say, where are we right now? What are the things that you really want to see? You know, we may not have a fully fleshed out rendering or design or sketch before you go on, uh, you, your break. But I, what I would like to do over the next couple of weeks before you go on recess is get kind of a, uh, if you will, homework assignment for staff over the break that we can work on where you can feel a higher degree of confidence, um, going into, uh, looking at planning to engineer, if that makes sense. So including other options.
Cory.
I appreciate that because one of the things that I've been sort of saying along that may or may not be true, um, is that, you know, my, my concerns around this project are sort of access to funding and how we tie that phasing to that. And if we sort of dilly dally around or we don't, whatever, whatever we might do, um, could affect the ability for us to actually like do any of it and fund it. And so I think that's part of it for us to keep in mind that, you know, if we're trying to get to some sort of moment of perfection, we might not get that. And also not to just like make staff have to come up with 25 different plans. So I kind of appreciate that reminder.
Well, and I guess I, the way I think about this is this plan is a long way from being, being ready for us to get into a serious conversation with the, with, with the community again. And it's really going to take, if I, if I listen to the work that Tom and Nancy describe, it's really going to take us into the fall to get, you know, get through this enough to give some concrete direction about what do we want that alternative to look like? And, uh, you know, I think we just have to give ourselves the space to do that. Because that is a long list that we've given, Tom.
Right. I, I really appreciate that, Mayor. I, I was going to try to say that without sounding too whiny, but you know, we're, we're in a staff deficit. We've got state mandates flying at us from every direction. You know, um, we want to do it right. We want to do it in partnership, obviously with the council so that you have something that, you know, you can feel good about. And taking the appropriate amount of time to do that while managing other priorities, I think is going to be key.
Is it realistic? Um, because we have more time scheduled. So I think shifting into what are we going to talk, like, dive into next week? One thing I would like to talk about next week is what's, what's the summer public outreach plan, right? Because there's an opportunity to go talk to more businesses, get additional feedback, talk to users to sort of inform and get more information in a way that, you know, take advantage of the time that we're going to all be at home with our, our latest summer novel.
America, I may, I, I would suggest, I, I think that's a good idea. I think as far as materials for the next couple of weeks, uh, we're going to have to be a little bit, uh, twigging the screen, stream, so to speak. Um, talking about here's some concepts because what, what we're really trying to do is get some, we're, we're hashing through some of this in real time. So I don't want to give the impression that we've already had this figured out and we're going to just tell you what it is. We really want to hear from you, respond to it and then plan.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments before? What other directions you guys need tonight? I know we want to talk about, come back and talk about the cuts in the median. Joe.
We, we could, we're, we're prepared to talk about that tonight.
Okay, let's see what, uh, Joe.
Yeah, just a little bit off topic. Um, Tom, when I, when we put those, um, when you put those three ring binders together with the, you may have to find a six inch binder somewhere, but, um, no, but it, I don't know about anybody else on the council. Um, I, that function of track changes. I know it's into the, into this quite a ways, but it would be great if we had the ability to, you know, like when you get a fifteen hundred page document, you can flip through it fairly quickly if we're comfortable with the first four hundred pages, whatever. And then after that, we made some changes. But when you're flipping through it, you don't know where those changes are or at, where they can be delineated easily and seeing, okay, that change has been made and we're going along. So even people can see, uh, chronologically how, how things are getting changed or modified or, you know, edified where it can show from somebody just walking up where, okay, this is where we're, we were at and this is where we're landing now. Or this is where we're, we see a landing strip ahead of us and this is kind of what we're shooting for. Um, am I making any sense? You know, I mean, it's, it's like, uh, because I'm visual, I'm a page person totally like you and like Steve is and, and, but would, that really is helpful to me to see what changes have been made after that last conversation. It's a tough one. It's a tough ask and I know that.
It is, uh, you know, we'll do, we'll do our best, but, um, if, if we're just going to take out four hundred pages and give you a hundred and fifty different pages.
Right.
There, there might be a different way to manage that. And, and track it.
Yeah, it just, I'm not, you know, and I try to, I got it. I've, over the years have worn out a lot of highlighters. But it's, it's, that's, you know, been my go-to is, is highlighting areas that we address. And then, or even putting those little sticky tabs at top, but just something to where we have some sort of system to, uh, even for citizens, if they can electronically look, I know that on PDF files, you can insert yellow notes, you know, the, the yellow pull-off tab, I've forgotten the name of those were post-it notes on, on PDF files to where if people can potentially even do that, um, download those PDFs and, and I can download a PDF and just create notes in that PDF file to easily jump to and either tear off or add to or whatever, but I'm thinking out loud.
Show the work as we make changes is what I wrote down and I, um, but I think there's, you know, um, there's a lot more sort of dialogue and review of the pieces before.
Yeah.
Get in, it's, because we're, we're not, we're just not going to go start changing the plan and bring it back. That's a little fetch a rock. We really want to know.
Right.
And, and have some good direction.
Something we can, but also something the city can show. The citizens, the citizens too. Okay, this is where we started with and we heard you and these are the changes we made in response to your, your inquiries and your suggestions and some of your, uh, frustrations. Something that shows that the city and staff and the councillors are, are responsive to, to them because frankly, this, this, I've been on, I've been on the council a long time. Um, since before, and this one topic has, uh, this one plan has, has not, has, there's nothing been close to how impactful this has been and how much energy our citizens are, are putting into this. And so I want to make sure that, that at some point when I leave the council that we, that I was part of something that was done right.
You still have to go back to gateway beltline councillor, but.
No, no, don't, yeah. Oh, yeah. Don't remind, don't remind, don't remind me of that.
Merrily.
Yes, as Joe was talking, I happen to think that one of the, one of the basic questions that has come to me um, over, over the last several months is how did we get from needing, how did we get from Main Street as is at the moment to nine roundabouts? How, how and why? And what the process was? And that's, that kind of envelops what you guys were just talking about. And that was just a basic question. How, how in recognizing Main Street as it is today, how did we get to the point of where we're looking at a plan that calls for now nine roundabouts? And what data was used to get there and, and was there, were there alternatives along the way? So just, just in a nutshell, that, that's been a lot of the, um, consternation on the part of members of the community that I've talked to.
Okay, should we invite Brian Barnett up?
Yes, I, I think we're ready for that.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. Last week I stated something that is an error and it relates to the number of access points on the corridor. I would point the council to pages, uh, seventy-two through seventy-four inclusive. And that is the discussion about when and why, uh, there would be median breaks and the design principles that would be utilized in that. So I won't try to summarize that because there's half a dozen, well, there's a dozen bullet points that are related to that. So I can simply say that last week I was wrong in how I stated it and the plan as written will be adjusted as we've discussed throughout, uh, this evening's conversation um, with those good questions. So I don't know that I can do anything other than answer your questions at this point, trying to go through this point by point. When there's a high probability that some of this will change, um, may or may not be productive, but I leave that to your discretion.
Joe.
Hi, Brian. Thanks. Hey, could you tell me, I'm trying to find the pages. So was that attachment? What attachment is that?
Uh, the, the facility plan is a hundred and seven pages in total length. It's on pages, starting on page seventy-two and runs through page seventy-four.
I don't think, I think there was a mistake in our packet, so I don't think we've got that right now. So maybe we can just, you can just communicate.
That's correct. It is not part of tonight's packet.
Yeah.
Um, it, it is the actual plan document.
Okay.
I believe you've all received previously.
Yeah. So could you read us the page numbers again?
Seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four.
And that covers sort of the, the principles behind where that, where.
Yeah, actually, let me start you on page seventy-one where the, the section title is called raised median framework.
Okay. Leonard.
I, I know there's a certain amount of curiosity here in the gallery, um, about what that says. Um, so could you summarize it? I mean, is, is it possible to summarize the three pages and the time allotted to us here?
Yes, um, I'll just hit the bullet titles and I think that might, um, touch upon what your request is. One, keep full access at all arterial and collector streets. Two, limit outer direction travel to thirty to sixty, ninety seconds on average. Pair, uh, raised medians with roundabouts that facilitates the U-turns. Uh, next bullet, U-turns at major, major intersections, i.e. roundabouts. Uh, U-turns at unsignalized intersections. Uh, avoid overlapping turn lanes. That references part of the discussion councillor Pictionary and I had last week. Um, consider left-in access to properties on Main Street that generate large volumes of traffic. I think I mentioned that last week as well. Um, emergency vehicle access, raised minions should not limit access to fire vehicles departing fire stations along Main Street. There's more there, um, mountable medians in certain specific locations. Uh, also fire hydrants on Main Street are currently located on one side of the street and would need to be, um, extended. So they're on both sides of the street. So a median isn't preventing fire access to water. Another bullet, access to streets with no other outlets. Some of our streets don't have another way yet into the community other than via Main Street. So that would be a place where we would want to provide full access. Uh, consider crossing locations for people walking and biking. That goes to an earlier comment that, um, we would want to consider access in those situations and also provide pedestrian access. And then pro- provide two-stage left turns from side streets. Again, back to, uh, last week's conversation with councillor Pictionary. And then phase improvements to avoid freight rerouting through residential neighborhoods. That goes back to a median paired with a roundabout on each end allows freight to make U-turns and stay on corridor. Those are the, uh, major bullet points.
Leonard.
So, uh, it, it said, uh, keep, uh, full access to, uh, the arterials. Would that be pioneer fourteenth, twenty-eighth, forty-second?
Uh, it'd be every, uh, traffic signal from twenty-first to sixty-ninth. It would also be other locations that are designated as arterial streets, but do not currently have traffic signals.
But potentially that could mean medians between those, depending on whether you had full access.
Yes, yes.
And, and I think that's the, that, that's the discussion point we're going to end up in because I don't know that we're all going to, you know, that we're all going to agree to having seven miles of continuous median. But that, that's actually one of the details we've got to get into in the fall. Is once everybody's read it, it's like, well, okay, where do we want the cuts if, if we go that way, right? Like, what does that actually look like? Okay, any other questions about this?
Sean, I got, or Brian, if I can, please.
Go ahead.
I couldn't find my darn raise the hand thing. So, um, yeah, I would like it broken down as, as far as a median, if, if there's even just notations of, okay, we're, you know, this is a safety thing. So I want to know, okay, if this median exists on this part of the roadway, I want to know why it does. Meaning what, can you, I, I need it to be justified engineering-wise, traffic engineering-wise. Why is that section there specifically as opposed to being part of a grander plan? You know, you know what I'm saying? Is every single piece, every foot, I want to see a justification as to every foot, how it's designed and to why. So we can say something to anybody that says, why did someone put a curve right there where I can't? And let me tell you why. We have that, it's, it's, that's an articitable fact. And, and if we can, I mean, this, I'm just scratching out here, trying to be able to find answers for people and, and it's, and that's why I'm throwing so many at you is that, you know, those questions, you know, people have a right to know and I, I want to know, I want to be able to know and, and be knowledgeable with this project and, and be comfortable by saying, by hitting that green button. So.
I do, and I respect these questions from both the community and from the council.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Deserving of, of good, solid answers and a rationale for the decisions that we're asking you to make.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it very much.
All right. I think we're all, we're almost, we're almost to the finish line. So thank you for everybody, uh, sort of sticking into a, kind of a long conversation. Um, one of the things Nancy and Tom that I also think would help us is right now, everybody's going to the plan for the answers, right? So we're having conversations and then they're looking for answers sort of in the plan. And I don't know if, what kind of, how we, uh, sort of, uh, put out there the, uh, the summary of the conversations that we're having and what direction we have. And I don't know if it's a running document, but at least that way we're, we're pairing for the public, the plan as it's written today and, uh, the conversations and how, kind of what, where we're at with it. Because it's just, that, that plan's too cumbersome for us to edit it until we kind of figure out what we think is the body. And then I have one more. Go ahead.
Well, um, I was going to ask about next week. So do we want to come back next week and have a further conversation about public involvement or do you feel like, you know?
I, I'd like to, and I'll look around for the council. I'd like to have a further conversation about public involvement through the summer because that way, um, you know, I know we're missing some people the, the week after. Because that way, um, you know, I know we're missing some people the, the week after, in, including myself. That way we're, that way we're having, um, giving some direction about, okay, how do we start forming up the fall? And then while we're reading this and talking to the public, you know, do we want the staff doing more? Or, you know, do we wanna host meetings? Do we wanna do town, like, what, what does that over the summer look like? And I'll, and I'll kind of pause here to look for head nods and, or anybody on the councils that's got a, kind of a different opinion. Yeah, so if, and maybe we can shorten the amount of time that we've got, cause I don't think we'll need it, we'll, we'll need an hour for that.
And it'll be another pretty sparse AIS that says, tell us what you think.
Well, and I think that's actually perfect for right now, right? As long as we're sort of capturing the conversation someplace so that people can start saying, hey, it's gonna start working its way towards the plan. I think we're, I think we're good with that. Um, one common question I do get is when we go to the website. Is, is all the work product, all the design diagrams, everything that we own, is it on that website?
I need to verify that. The draft plan is on the website and all the technical memoranda are on the website. Um, so I think all the work product that has been delivered to Springfield is on the website.
Okay.
But I do wanna verify.
Okay, yeah, because I, I've gotten some questions about there being other diagrams that are out there. And even if we have, if there's some conceptual documents for, for different alternatives, right? It might, you know, it might be good to get just clarification if, if we're saying it's all up there or just the formula, formalized plan or just the. You know, or just the technical memos.
Great.
Okay, really appreciate it. Um. I think that is it until seven o'clock, so I'm gonna adjourn us for the next fifteen minutes and then we'll reconvene on this link for CETA. Well, no, wait, hang on. I'm getting waved off here. We are in a different link for CETA. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.